I call to order the Saline County Commission Public Forum and Meeting of February 2nd, 2016. Would you all stand and join me in a flag salute in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Guile.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Moving on next to the public forum, it's a time where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak today?
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. I was hoping to get some clarification for something I saw, observed this morning upstairs. As part of the discussion regarding the Sheriff's Department, there were comments that some of the sheriff's deputies don't make nearly what the police department staff make, that the factor might be $10 an hour or $10,000 difference a year. Just prior to that, I should say, there are some concerns with just retaining or recruiting not only the correction officers, the truck drivers, the nurses, there's some concerns along that line. And this morning, three of you voted to enter into a salary contract with Archer Corporation that would do a salary survey that would help address this issue, but Commissioners Guile and Price voted no. And I just wondered why that might be, because it seemed to be contrary to making sure employees are paid fairly.
Well, I'll answer that. When we, we had a discussion about, we cannot hire an RN for 18, $16, $18 an hour. You can't do that. So every time we have to hire an RN, we have a meeting and we, you're going to pay $22 for an RN, or you're not going to hire one. So it's just knowledge. Why don't we change that? And we know we have to change that.
You were just saying that we didn't need the study to do this.
Right.
But you know that a truck driver should.
Yes. And then a truck driver gets $12 an hour and he should be getting, he'd go to work anywhere for 16 an hour. So we have a meeting, we, a lot of our private, that we go in to discuss that, and we come back out and we give them the money we have to give them. So we can get that worked out without doing an Archer study.
We just had a legitimate disagreement here. I like the facts. I like to see what other places are doing. I understand Commissioner Price's and Guile's comments too, that, you know, we have to be competitive with our wages. So it's just how we get to that point is what we disagreed on, but we all want to be at that point.
And the survey protects every employee, because maybe right now it's truck drivers that are needed at Roden Bridge, maybe not a mechanic. But, but the survey will make sure everyone's wages are considered, and it's not tossing, you know, willy-nilly addressing things as they come up, but making sure there's a solid structure there. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and, and the thing was, is they said, well, if we're going to do that study, and that was our HR, our administrator, we need to do it for everybody. Well, I don't, every time somebody, something's wrong and we need to fix it, I don't think we have to spend $11,000 to fix it. It's always spending money to fix something. So just fix it, fix the problem, quits wasting taxpayers' money. That's where I'm at.
Okay. Moving on to regular business.
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. What can the public, excuse me, I have a cold. What is the, or what can the public talk about when given the floor in citizens' forum? I'd like for the chairman to set those guidelines, so we know specifically there's, whether there's an issue or not, as far as what they can or can't talk about.
And you know, it's nothing that I've necessarily established. It's, and I'll lean on Commissioner Price and Guile for a little direction about what happened before I got here, but it's normally limited to something that this board has power to do. And it's a time for you to come up and tell us, you're not doing this, you should be doing this, you should be doing this. Is that how it's traditionally been? My whole point is, I mean, I don't want, the presidential politics are going on right now. I don't think that this is an appropriate time to address us, of who you want for the president to be here.
I didn't ask that.
I know. Well, no, you actually, exactly what you just asked. You just act, you asked what is appropriate and what is not appropriate. I'm telling you, in my mind, what is not appropriate.
I agree with that.
So I, so I'm just giving you an example. So it is what you asked of me. And so I will lean a little bit on these about what the precedent is.
In the past, it's always been, if it's going to be like, don't come up and start talking about the proclamation of dating, because we're going to talk about that later. Don't, don't talk about the backup systems, don't talk about the portable radios. That's coming up on the agenda. So don't talk about things that are on the agenda.
I'm aware of that.
Other than that, I don't think we've ever had a.
Okay.
But if, you know, if it's just, if it's getting off on something, you're limited to three minutes, so you're going to stop.
Under parliamentary rules that when a citizen is given the floor, they can talk about what they want to talk about. And you're saying it has to be county business, or you can't talk about it. Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's what my understanding is, what it is.
That's what, that used to be just about county business. And we have let, a lot of things have slid, you know, that you talk about city business. You do the same thing, like say the health department, those people were coming over here telling us what they thought that needed to be done with the board and this and that. I mean, you guys talked about it. It was not on the agenda when it first started. You, you remember when all that stuff started in here?
I'm not sure I understand your point.
Well, when they come in here with an idea, the idea, you've had ideas that you thought maybe the county ought to be run a little different in some, some situations.
Do you have an example of that?
And you suggested, I don't right now, but you have, I mean, you suggested some things that we needed to do. And we have looked at those things, and we've actually, some of those things we have done, Ray.
Well, thank you.
We looked at it and found out that it was appropriate to do. And we went ahead and followed up with your, so you do learn, you do learn when somebody comes up and makes a suggestion, maybe the county ought to do a little different way of structuring our up here, like say the board and stuff like that. And we did that.
Or roads and bridges.
Roads and bridges.
What, what needs to be done and.
Yep.
And the city is in the county, so I guess it is county business. But we've been real fair up here.
Oh, I think so.
I don't think you could find a fairer board, do you?
I don't think so.
The, the only thing I wanted to add, and I wanted to clarify, is when we say that you can speak on anything to do in the county or county government or anything like that.
That's not on the agenda.
The reason for that is, when we get to that item on the agenda, there is always room then for public comment. So that's why it's inappropriate or not expected at the beginning of the forum, because you wait until it's on the agenda and the chairman offers discussion, calls for discussion.
And I understand that. And it's, it's been that way for some time.
And sometimes, and sometimes people forget, and they start talking about something on the agenda, and we just have to tell them to wait and point that out, that it's item number four, and you'll have to wait till it comes up on the agenda to speak about that.
Yeah, it's always been that way.
Yeah.
I've tried to be as fair as possible, so.
He told you you're doing a good job and recommended you stay on, so you did what you did.
That was two weeks ago.
Yeah.
What changed your mind?
Changed his mind. I think his influence got you back on.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Ray.
Get you a big hat now.
Yeah. Anything else?
That should take care of it. I just wanted to clarify that, so that the public knows what's going on, that we can talk about certain things. But it is at the discretion of the chairman, whether or not he will allow that.
And I can't ever remember me shutting anybody down, but.
You tried to one time last week. You interrupted me, when I had the floor.
Well, that might not be the last time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for doing a good job.
Moving on to regular business, item number one.
It's approval of agenda for today's public meeting as presented.
Are there any changes that need to happen? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda for the public forum as public, or presented.
One second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for January 26, 2016.
Are there any changes that need to be made? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for January the 26th, 2016, as presented.
I second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Passes five zero. Item number three.
We have a proclamation for Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Courtney Train?
Actually, yeah, I want to say, sorry about that. Courtney is the, one of our staff that coordinates these things. So my name is Sheila Beeson, so, just for the record. Yeah. And I'm the Teen Dating Violence Coordinator at D-VAC, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas. And we're located here in Salina, but we serve 10 counties, the local 10 counties. And so this month is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and we appreciate that the county is looking at doing the proclamation this month. So I'll go ahead and read it, and then I have some events, that sort of thing, if you want me to talk about it, I can do that. So, Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month proclamation, February 2016. Whereas, females between the ages 16 to 24 are more vulnerable to intimate partner violence, experiencing abuse at a rate almost triple the national average. And whereas, one in three adolescent girls in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates of any other, or other types of violence affecting youth. And whereas, high school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at greater risk of suicide, and are more, much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas, young people victimized by a dating partner are more likely to engage in risky sexual behavior, in unhealthy dating behaviors, and the experience may disrupt normal development of self-esteem and body image. And whereas, nearly half of teens who experience dating violence report that incidents of abuse took place in a school building or on school grounds. And whereas, only 33% of teens who are in abusive relationships ever tell anybody, anyone about the abuse. And 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue, or they admit that they do not know if it is one. And whereas, by providing young people with education about healthy relationships and relationship skills, and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And whereas, it is essential to raise community awareness and to provide training for teachers, counselors, and school staff, so they may recognize when youth are exhibiting signs of dating violence. And whereas, the establishment of Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month will benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity. Whereas, everyone has the right to a safe and healthy relationship and to be free from abuse. And whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas needs all of Saline County to work towards ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in accessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for young people in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies in schools, and engaging in discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of teen dating violence. Now therefore, the county of Saline hereby proclaims February 2016 to be designated as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and urges our citizens to recognize and assist all those that serve the rights and needs of victims of dating violence, teen dating violence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the events that you have planned?
Yes. We have several things going on. I work with local schools, and some of the students are creating campaigns for teen dating violence awareness. I'm also doing some one-time presentations to classes such as South Middle. They have a fax class that I go all day and see about 125 students that day. We also have a display at our bargain basket window down at Walnut and Santa Fe. Please stop by, check that out. And we'll have posts daily on Facebook about teen dating violence and how parents and bystanders can help. Today is actually, it's Time to Talk Day. It's a national recognized thing too. So there's really awesome link on there that I put on there. For parents, create 10 questions to talk to your teens, to really get started talking about healthy relationships.
Very good.
So yeah. Gosh, that's about it, I think.
That's a lot.
Yeah. We try to keep busy.
Well, thank you for being here. And is there a motion to, is there action?
Mr. Chairman, I move we proclaim February 2016 as National Teen Dating Violation Awareness Month.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. And I do have your signed proclamation here.
Great.
I'd like to comment on that a little bit. I think there are resources, this is a moral issue. You talked about changing attitudes that support violence. That's an inner moral issue. There are resources that the school system is not using and has rejected that would help that issue.
I think the schools in general have something in place, whether it's D-VAC or another program, maybe their health teachers, which I'm always open to going in and doing presentations and working with youth. But as far as like society, TV, movies, there's just so much that really encourages interpersonal violence, whether we realize it or not. We look at all kinds of things when we work with the students, you know, we really get them questioning about why we think the way we do. So we look at it, you know, if a girl's wearing a short skirt, does that mean she should be, you know, sexually assaulted? Or does a boyfriend, or even a girlfriend, have the right to monitor internet, you know, use the social media and that sort of thing? So we really get them questioning it, because the studies have found that girls are almost as likely as boys to be perpetrators of teen dating violence. May not be physical, it may be more of the emotional jealousy controlling. So we really get them questioning why we think the way we do. And yeah, and sometimes it can be deep within, and we don't realize why we think the way we do, until we really get them questioning about it. Yeah. Hopefully that answered them.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Moving on to item number four.
That's request for action 107-16. It's the updated county data backup system with Brad Bowers, our IT director.
Mr. Bowers.
Morning.
This request for action is for upgrading our information technology data backup systems. This project will upgrade CommVault, which is our application software that we use to do our data backups with. And it will also upgrade the, the server hardware that runs the backup software, CommVault. Today, we back up data to two places, to a, to a disk device that's installed on our network, and we also back up data to tape. The tape is what we take offsite for storage for, you know, disaster recovery and things like that. This particular upgrade that we're talking about will replace the server that runs the CommVault backup software, as well as the disk-based portion of our, of our backups. The upgrade will allow us to do our backups in a more efficient manner, meaning we will use less space due to better compression ratios that the, that the CommVault upgrade will give us. The upgrade will allow us to get rid of one of the, one device on our network, which is the disk-based portion, as the disk-based portion of our backups will be, will be consolidated into the server hardware that we're, that we're buying as part of this upgrade. So that'll allow us to get rid of that device, save a maintenance contract and, and power consumption in the, in the data center. The total cost of the project is $21,316 from Eagle Software of Salina. Eagle Software provided our current backup systems as a result of a request for proposal back in 2008. $21,315 was budgeted for this project in the 2016 technology improvement budget. We can obviously deny this request and go back for more research, if that is your wish. The staff recommendation is, we recommend moving forward with this project with Eagle Software. Data backups are crucial to anything we do. And Eagle specifically has been a very valued partner with us in our, in our backup technologies. They could be very much relied on in a, in a massive disaster situation to help us restore what we need to restore. They're familiar with, with our architecture. They know, they know our systems and, and, you know, what we are backing up. So they're a very, they would be a valued, a valued resource in the event that all three of us were gone or couldn't, couldn't, couldn't participate in the, in the disaster for whatever reason. So we recommend that we move forward with Eagle. Any questions?
The 300, this error, 21,315. Is that all we have, or are we a dollar short on that?
The actual quote is for 21,315.42. So I rounded that up.
Okay, but we do have that in that, in that account.
Brad, what did the '08 system cost, do you know?
You know, I didn't bring that piece of paper with me, but I, I brought that to the work session, and we were right in this window. So I was surprised, because there wasn't very much inflation between when we put that system in and what we're, and what this is costing. It was, this is a little bit more, but it was in, you know, I was thinking it was within 2% or 3%. I meant to bring that piece of paper with me, and I didn't.
It's close enough.
Yep.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. Brad, I'm, I think I'm familiar enough with Eagle Communications. You've done business with them before, you know, over the years. Where are they located at now?
It's actually Eagle Software Technologies, and they're located over on Indiana Street, off of Iron, about a half block south off of Iron on Indiana. It's Eagle Software Technologies, not Eagle Communications. Did I misspeak? No, Eagle Software, he said that.
And I'm assuming you went out for bid of multiple vendors for this?
We did not, because this is an upgrade of one of our systems. Typically, when you, when we do an upgrade like this, we, we stay with the vendor that, that originally put the, the system in. And Eagle is, Eagle does have the state contract pricing on this, on the, on both of these products. So we stayed with Eagle. Not only, not only for, because it is an upgrade, but they're, they're very familiar with what we do and how we do it. So we, as being an up, as being part of an upgrade, we stayed with that vendor.
Well, being an upgrade, I still think it should be required to seek other vendors, because IBM and the AS400 has been in service for a long time. And you're not going back to IBM to do an upgrade with their AS400, probably because they won't provide you with one for the AS400, possibly.
Well, in fact, we have done upgrades on the AS400 system. And, and as I recall, every upgrade did result in another IBM product. Now whether it was bought from IBM proper or a, or a third-party vendor of IBM products, it was, it still ended up as an IBM.
Thank you for your comments. You've enlightened me very, a great deal. I didn't understand that or knew that before. Thank you.
Norman Mantle, Salina. Does the benefit justify the cost? Does technology upgrade really benefit us that much in the long run? Because the agricultural industry is starting to look at getting rid of technology. Doesn't improve our bottom line any. You're spending money for just a little bit, when you could do without it by not having it and still get the job done. So I don't think we're justifying the cost on some of our things. It's nice to have toys, but not when the taxpayer's paying for it.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comments? Bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Computers are beyond me on some things, and I think Brad's done a good job of providing us what we need. And they say there's no trust in the county. Well, I kind of trust Brad on what he does.
I do.
I have to, Brad, because, but I do ask a lot of questions about things. I want to understand it.
You want to?
I understand this is an upgrade. It's not that we're, if, if we were taking on something new, we would put it up for bids.
As the original, as the original system was, the result of an RFP, agreed, definitely.
Right.
Yep.
And it's in our budget.
It is.
So we're.
Yeah, it was discussed last year.
Commissioner Guile?
And it is an advantage to have this. I mean, it's, it carries its weight, does it not?
We, we don't, we don't really see the true benefit of, of backup systems until you need them.
Till you need them.
So you know, 99.9% of the time, everything is just fine and, and dandy. But, you know, when you have that storm come through, or water in the courthouse, or whatever the situation may be, that's when the true value of something like this comes through.
I think that we experienced that once already with our one that we have in Colorado.
Yep.
And we are backed up at the sheriff's office also. Is that not right?
Yes, we back up data across the street. Yep.
Well, we've been pretty lucky that we were there, because we would have been in trouble with maybe FEMA or somebody else if we didn't have that backup.
We can.
It's just hard to see the value until you need it.
I know, until you get there, and that's true.
Is there action on this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we upgrade the, the Saline County data backup system for $21,316 through Eagle Software of Salina.
I'll second.
All right. Commissioner Price seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Thank you very much, Brad. Item number five.
That's request for action 105-16 for the purchase of 10 2016 portable radios. I have Captain Roger Soldan of the sheriff's office here.
Captain?
Good morning. Part of our equipment improvement program for 2016, we were requested funds to upgrade some of our radios that have been in service since 2000 and 2003. They were kind of a mixture of those two years they were purchased. These are portable radios that are carried by the patrol officers. $15,000 was approved for upgrades of our radios. We worked with our vendor, KCOM of Salina, to get a bid. That bid includes a discount that was negotiated through the Mid-America Regional Council, Kansas City Regional Purchasing Cooperative, that brought the price down some. The total cost for these 10 radios would be $14,655. That's what we're asking for, is to upgrade our radios at that cost. These are the radios that patrol officers use, and they're really the, their only line of communication when they're outside of a car.
Did you bring one of the bad ones, so we could see it?
I really should have brought one of the bad ones.
Because I understand there, some of them are pretty bad.
Some of them are pretty bad. They're wrapped, some of them are wrapped with electrical tape, some of them are zip-tied together. So they're radios that can't be repaired, they can't order parts for. They're.
Maybe next time you can bring one like that.
They've served their service. Yeah, I've got them in my office.
I prefer baling wire.
Questions of the captain?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there public comment?
Is there, is there a certain amount that you come, like if it's, some things you needed to, I guess I'm asking, why do you come to us for this? I mean, is, do we have a limited amount that you can spend without coming to us? Is that why you're here?
My understanding is it's $4,000.
$4,000.
Okay. And that is why you're here, is because it's over for, I just wanted to make the public understand.
Yeah, that was the number.
That we do keep track of what's being spent, and that's why you're here.
And this was money that was earmarked for this purchase.
Right. Right. So I, I thought it'd be good if we, the public understood why, why we're spending their money.
Very good. Thank you.
Public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the KCOM Incorporated to purchase 10 portable radios through Mid-America Regional Council, Kansas City Regional Purchasing Cooperative for $14,655. through Mid-America Regional Council, Kansas City Regional Purchasing Cooperative for fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Item number six.
It's resolution sixteen dash twenty-one ninety-one to nominate Tracy Wiegert to the Solid Waste Management Committee. Have a report by Rita Deister, county administrator.
We've had openings on, um, the Solid Waste Management Committee for several, uh, months now and we finally got a interest form in from Tracy Wiegert.
We, I believe it's Wiegert perhaps.
Okay. And, uh, so, um, he would qualify for the, um, Sling County Member at Large. For this committee, the, uh, Sling County Commissioners nominates someone and the, uh, the, um, city commission actually, um, places them on the committee. So, uh, today we, we've got a resolution nominating Tracy to the Member at Large. And for the public out there, we've got two other open positions. Uh, we have another Member at Large position and we also need someone to serve from the third-class city, so.
Very good. Motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we sign, uh, resolution sixteen dash twenty-one ninety-one nominating Tracy Wiegert. Is that right?
Wiegert.
Uh, to the Solid Waste Management Committee for a three-year term as Sling County Member at Large.
I'll second that. So motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Item number seven.
So Road and Bridge and County Engineer Updates. Uh, I have Gary Nash, Director of Road and Bridge, and Neil Cable, our County Engineer.
Gentlemen?
Good morning. All right, uh, for December and January, for the Road and Bridge Department, uh, our rural operators have been out doing a lot of ditch cleaning and, uh, and laybacks. Uh, been pulling some shoulders here and there and doing a lot of aggregate retrieval. Um, also, they also have been maintaining the roads. Been putting quite a bit of rock down here lately. As far as departmental forces, we did have a snow and ice event, uh, a week or so ago. With that event, we put down approximately a hundred and sixty tons of salt and, uh, used about four hundred and fifteen man-hours to, uh, defeat that snow and it costs us approximately eighteen thousand dollars for that, uh, for those two days. Do a lot of trash pickups countywide. I think we need to discuss sometime or other with the city, um, about dump usage. If it's a legitimate, uh, task or work order that we get, you know, a call-in from somebody out in the county saying, hey, we got trash in the ditch, whether it's a sofa, whether it's a mattress, whether it's tires, whether it's a refrigerator. Is that, uh, maybe we can work an agreement with the city to not be charged to take that to the dump? Cause it's coming out of our funds to be able to go pick up this stuff and then take it to the dump. So it's something we, I think we need to talk about sometime in the future.
Could we, could we use prisoners for that?
I have to ask the sheriff. Uh, we dug a few section corners for some engineering projects for car engineering. The picture you got up on the board over there, uh, we had a crossroad entrance culvert for road improvement on Honig Road, uh, north of Sungren Road. Basically you had where that barrel is up there on the screen, about, uh, a third of the road had actually fallen off into the ditch from, uh, erosion. And then we had Bob's screw went out and, uh, dug, that's a crossroad culvert. So they'd basically dug completely through the road, put in a culvert. And then dug out the ditches. And improved the, uh, the water flow. All right, uh, we started bridge maintenance, uh, from the br- bridge inspection list. Right now we've got approximately, uh, seven out of the sixty-four complete, which is approximately eleven percent. This here is a picture of a rebuilt box culvert on McCurrell's Road east of Burma Road that had deteriorated. That's what it looks like now. We've placed, uh, AB three in entrances to repair the drop-off created from the asphalt overlay on Donmire Road. So basically every time we go do an asphalt overlay, it raises the asphalt up. So then after that, we got to go put rock into the driveway entrances. So we just, we've done that, uh, back in, uh, December. Also, duripatch, uh, Donmire Road, a little late in the season for it, but we had needed to do that cause there was a thin layer of asphalt that was put down that began to peel up in a few spots. And we got a call about that, so we went out and, uh, spot patched those to get us through the winter. And then, uh, this next spring and summer, that road will be, uh, overlaid. Also replaced a wooden box culvert deck on Farley Road. This is out by the bombing range. It's just old and deteriorated and starting to fall apart.
Is that right west of the bombing range?
Yeah, it's west of, on, uh, Farley. There at Farley and Link.
And it goes into a dead end?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yep.
I thought so. I, I was on that. But, but matter of fact, that's probably my tracks, some of them.
Yeah, they did a good job of that. That's actually really deep.
Yeah.
Crick crossing right there.
You had some trees you had to remove there too, didn't you, or something?
Just a couple.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's see. All right, then we started doing flood repair. From the, the rains that we had, uh, around Jifson Creek to Country Club Road and then Middle Dry Creek from Sungren Road to Parsons Road. There were several other roads that were washed out and the guys ended up having to, uh, do a lot of rebuilding of those roads and then a lot of aggregate retrieval from the fields, uh, from where the floodwaters pushed everything off. And then also, um, brush and debris removal from the same, from same floodwaters.
Was that that last three-inch rain we had?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. See, that's all just been rebuilt.
That's just all water crossing the road. Uh, it takes a lot of time for those guys to take all that equipment out there and once things kind of dry up just enough to get in there and then start getting that stuff rebuilt. So, and I'll talk about the sign guys here in a little bit, but they had, you know, we had to put a lot of signs out for, uh, for high waters and, uh, and rough roads, cause once these things came through, the roads were just completely tore up. All right. Okay, we constructed an entrance box culvert on Simpson Road, south of Farley Road. This is the one where the concrete truck fell through. Uh, this is not it. Oh, this is more flood stuff here, sorry. Uh, there's a concrete truck. All right, so we basically ripped that whole thing out and then rebuilt it. This was the temporary driveway, uh, while the box was being built. And that's what it looks like now.
Where's, where's the liability on that, uh, accident, that concrete truck?
We've turned it all over to the insurance and the lawyers.
Yeah, Mike's working on it. I talked to him this morning and so we're still trying to decide where that all is going to go, so.
Wait. You brought out Neil last, that, we could go Friday. If you've got a road like that and you're going to have some heavy equipment go over and, uh, it's good to the owner to know it, but construction people and, and cement truck people, they know before they cross a bridge, they can call the county, you'll go out and inspect it. And if you think there's a reason that it will not crush, you'll support it and make it so they can. And they know they need to do that. So if something has happened and they haven't done that, who's the liability fallen? It's not us, cause we offer the service. Do, uh, we have an engineer that'll go out and tell you if, if, I mean, I'm just telling the public right now, if you have a question on a bridge or what you're crossing, contact our engineer before you cross it.
Other than that, we've been hauling a lot of aggregate throughout the county. Uh, approximately four hundred tons of sand, two hundred ton, two hundred and ten tons of Lincoln roadstone and then, uh, thirty-seven hundred and fifty tons of crushed rock, road rock and then four hundred and fifty tons of AB three. Traffic control guys, uh, doing a lot of sign maintenance. Approximately two hundred and fourteen signs they worked, uh, over those last two months. Uh, placed and removed several temporary road closure barricades for various projects we've been working on throughout the county. And then, like I was talking about before during the floods, uh, placed twenty-two type-two barricades with high water and rough road signs, uh, for that event. Other than that, that's about it. We are interviewing today for a mechanic A and then a truck driver. And with any luck, uh, by the end of next week, we should be, uh, full up.
Is that, is that thirty-seven hundred tons? Is that right?
Thirty-seven hundred tons, yes, sir.
That's a lot.
Yep. We've been laying a lot of rock.
Questions before we move to Neil? All right, Neil?
Good morning, commi- commissioners. Uh, this is the Engineering Division portion of, of the Road and Bridge Department report and, uh...
Give me the mouse for just a minute. No, I mean, I got a mouse. I'm just going to put it in. Follow your hand.
Okay, there it is. Actually, you got the written part of the report and if we, you know, there's a few things I'll point out after I show you the pictures here, but, um, how does this thing work? There it is. We'll start with the Lapsley Road Bridge Project and, uh, a lot of progress on that thing over the last two months. Whoop. That was early December. We're still driving piling for the western bridge pier. And, uh, they put the platform for, uh, placing the concrete in that pier. And, um, I'll go here pretty quick with that. That's just putting the concrete in the pier. And then they drove the piling for the, uh, western, uh, abutment for that bridge and placed the shotrock. They placed a shotrock that's for the, uh, protection of the slope embankment under the bridge. Obviously, they do that before the bridge deck's on. It's a lot easier to clamshell it in there when, when a bridge is not in the way. Removing the formwork for that pier. And then they started, uh, they, they've driven all the false work poles. That's all those telephone poles that you see there. It's kind of a forest of poles. And then they start putting the, the formwork for the bridge deck on there. And that's the completion of the formwork in place. That's kind of what it looks like from the side. And you can see it's a, it's a honch slab or a, uh, so that's why it kind of has that curved look. Then they began placing the reinforcing. It's, it's, it is the green reinforcement, reinforcing, which is the epoxy coated for corrosion resistance. And then that's, that's pretty much the completion of that. And then last Friday, they put the, started pouring the bridge deck itself. Whoop. I think I'm... Okay, yeah. That's, that was about seven AM last Friday morning and started placing the bridge deck. Yeah, in the, uh, eastern abutment, we put a, we put a benchmark, which will be for future elevation reference out in that part of the county. And that's a finishing, they finish right behind the concrete placement. They, what the guy's doing there is tining the deck and that's putting those little grooves in the deck for, for, uh, yeah, for traction. And there's the conveyor. Uh, they typically, whoop. They typically pump the concrete, but the, uh, all the pumps were spoken for, so they brought a conveyor. So this was kind of unusual situation and, and so we, uh, had a conveyor until, uh, mid-morning and, and the hydraulics of the conveyor broke down. So they kind of rushed a concrete pump out of Wichita, yeah, to finish the job. So it, uh, it started leaking a lot of hydraulic fluid. And so.
He was reached out there two hundred and twenty feet.
Yeah, it was, it's pretty, yeah, it's pretty amazing to see that conveyor strung out that far. And, uh, that's kind of how it was progressing till, till we lost the conveyor. And that's, uh, basically at the very far western end of the bridge, when they were completing the, the deck pour, which was early afternoon on Friday. And that's the completion of the deck pour and that's what it looks like right now out there. It's covered up with insulation blankets, but the, uh, the rebar that's sticking up out of there is for the railing system, which here in a couple of weeks, I'll come back and put the railing on the bridge.
Couldn't have had better weather for that.
Oh, it was, it was awesome.
Something, wasn't it?
Yeah, no wind and it wasn't cold, so it was really a nice day.
Sixty-three degrees.
Yeah, yeah, it was really nice. So then, uh, the next category here is the twenty-thirteen reinforced concrete box package. We had one, uh, one, one box to finish in that package and that's on Rose Hill Road, four-tenths of a mile west of Solomon Road. And this is Reese Construction. The package was like fifteen boxes all over the county and this is the last one to be done under that, um, that package. Uh, had a lot of problem with water out there and so they put crushed stone under the box. And, uh, that's what it looked like, uh, over the holidays. The water came in and froze. So it kind of waited for it to thaw out and then they came back and laid out the rebar and started placing the concrete. Again, uh, there, they're placing the wall rebar sticking up there. And then that's actually the placement of the concrete in the, for the walls and for the deck slab, top deck slab. And that's, uh, placing the concrete too. Anyhow, that, that box is finished out there, uh, but it's not backfilled. Right now, things are kind of sloppy out there, so it, it's going to be a little while before they can backfill it and reopen the road.
That isn't one on Crawford, is it?
No, this is the one on, on, um, Rose, Rose Hill Road. And so then we got our twenty-fifteen reinforced concrete box package. There we had two boxes, as you'll recall, one's on Crawford and the other one's on Simpson. And this is the Crawford one, half mile east of Woodward Road. That's kind of just getting the, the old structure out and leveled up. Then they put down crushed stone again and, uh, form up the base. Kind of repetitive pictures, but each one's a unique site and they're kind of fun to wa- watch them build. Here, that, that's a concrete pump, which we lacked for the br- bridge placement until we kind of got in trouble, but.
That one right there, you had that three-inch rain on that.
Yeah.
When they just, they just put that base in there.
Yeah.
And boy, they were, they were lucky. I mean, that thing was really set up to where the water got away.
Yeah, they did a good job of diverting the water.
Right back in there the next day.
Yeah, there's ba- placing the base slab and... Again, kind of following it through. I, I, I guess these pictures are a little bit repetitive, but, uh, we, there's a lot of work. In, in a two-month period in Sling County, we pour a lot of concrete. So there's, you know, probably between the boxes and the bridge, uh, you know, five hundred, six hundred cubic yards of concrete get placed in, in a two-month time period. Whoop.
Those boxes.
That went kind of fast.
Those boxes is about a two-hundred thousand dollar project, is that just?
No, each box is probably more in the order of forty to fifty thousand dollars. And we let them by the dozen typically, or, I mean, we have in the past. This year, we've got another package for nine more that we're bringing forward.
Forty to fifty thousand for a box?
Yeah.
Yeah. The one on Simpson Roads, just like that, is that, that isn't one.
Uh, no, that, that one's still Crawford.
Why couldn't, why couldn't that be down on Stimmel, west of States, of Headville?
It's, uh, that's, that's bridge length. We can't put in smaller, uh, than what was there before. These are not as large as a bridge length, uh, they can't accommodate that kind of flow, the Mulberry Creek. So you'd, you'd have, you have to put in a structure that's larger. And, uh, DWR wouldn't let, Department of Water Resources wouldn't let you build a smaller structure. If it constricts the flow, I mean, the, the area out there developed basically with a certain size structure. So people built houses and everything. Now, if we put in a smaller structure that constricted the flow and started flooding land, a lot of folks would find they're getting flooded that didn't used to be flooded. So we're not allowed to build a smaller structure.
What about the low water that was there before?
It, what was there before was a, a metal arch structure and it was a pretty good si- pretty good-sized structure, actually.
It was a pretty big hole, but you're not allowed to come back with something like that?
They don't, uh, they don't have real good longevity, you know? So, some of them have been there a number... They don't, they don't have real good longevity, you know, so, some of them have been there a number of years, but then they, it's not too many years before that. Our, our water in Sling County is pretty corrosive and we've had that issue with our corrugated metal culvert pipes all over the county that, that. In fact, Kansas Department of Transportation has gone away from using galvanized steel because it eats up with the corrosive conditions. Of the water, spring water in this part of the state, so we've gone to aluminumized pipe, actually KDOT did and we, we followed suit with KDOT. So we use, we don't even use galvanized steel anymore, like some of those old metal arches like that.
We, we went out and looked at that bridge, Jim and I, before we even on as Commissioners and, and the big problem out there was, at that time they had all that wood and stuff that was piled up that. It, every time it flooded, all that wood came down from all. That was low, caused a lot of labor in that crack for the county to go out and.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you cleaned it one time and it flooded again and you had to go out and do it again.
Yeah, and that, that's very labor intensive to have to pull that stuff out.
We had to take it out because of the blacktop that was in there, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was black, there was asphalt in the creek, which is.
So you use prisoners for that too.
Again, you know, that'd be the sheriff. Sheriff's call on that one.
We're saving the prisoners for the river project.
Commissioner Smith, was this the project that you were talking about this morning?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand why a low water.
Low water crossings are a bit deceiving, we, the county's built some, they're not as cheap as you think and they're kind of the gift that keeps on giving, because they, every time it rains, they silt in, we've got, you know, Gary could probably, I don't know if you've experienced. There's one not too far from where the Stemel Bridge is we're talking about and every rain causes it to silt in and, and a bunch of debris comes in, so it's impassable until it dries out a little bit, then our guys.
Crane.
Yeah, bring, have to bring the excavators out, so low water crossings are inherently dangerous, number one, because people see a little bit of water running over the road and they think, you know, that's not deep enough and, you know. There's a lot of tragedies of, of people getting swept off roads, it don't, it doesn't take much water over a road, like six inches, they say, to sweep a car off the road, but people keep pushing that. So it's, it's dangerous, there, the first cost on that one out there in your area, I think, was seventy-some odd thousand dollars, that was, that was before I got here, so that's more than ten years ago and then every storm event, you've got to. Send your guys out there to dig out a mountain of silt, you know, because it silt's in, you know, so, you know, it's.
We used to have that same problem on the Link Bridge until we put the new bridge in.
Yeah.
We, we put that in, what, two years ago?
Yeah.
And it's been the same thing, all that trees were piled up.
Yeah.
And then it'd tear everything.
And I don't think we've been out there since have, having, since we put a.
Goes right under there.
Yeah.
And in order to raise that bridge, it was over about a half a million dollars. Yeah.
Yeah, Stemel would be an expensive.
Every bit of it.
Because of the nature of the terrain out there, so that, it would be probably half a million dollars.
And what our, as the Commissioners, what we've kind of worked on there was, I think it was either you could, if you're going to Salina. And you came down Stemel, you could turn and go across the railroad tracks and go into Headville. And I don't know if that was a quarter mile or half a mile, but.
It was only a quarter mile difference.
You'd be a half, if you were going to the interstate, you would save. A half a mile driving. Well, can we afford six hundred thousand dollars, I mean, that, now and then at the same time, we had that one in Ottawa County that was causing people eight miles to go out of the way. We had to fix it, so the money that we have is, needs to be spent where it's most needed and that, we didn't feel that was the most needed.
And the same thing.
Well, it wasn't the most needed, that for a half a mile.
Same thing on that Wyman Bridge, that's the reason why we done that, we saved about six and a half miles for the people that actually lived out there.
Those are never easy decisions to make, I know, and, and that's really for you guys, not us, you know, we, we lay it out for you, but, you know, it's, it's a tough, you know, because there are people that would like it for convenience, but, but again, you have to weigh all those factors and that's.
That Wyman Bridge was gone for like, what, ten years? And then we decided.
A good eight, a good eight years, yeah.
Eight years at least and when we put that in there, that, that actually was the best thing to do right there because that really has helped everybody out in that area. And the same way with that Wise Bridge out there, we done away with that Wise Bridge because it only served one house and it was six hundred thousand dollar bridge to go across the Mulberry. Same thing that the one we're talking about on Stemel Road.
Yeah.
And, what, we built that road for thirty-five thousand?
I can't recall, that's been a long time.
It hasn't been that long ago.
Yeah, it's, it's, it was well short of what a bridge would cost, yeah.
You look at our county and you see all these bridges and all this cement and all this work we do and you, you know, you think of the county, if you live in the county, you kind of live in your little area, but the county goes a long ways in every direction.
Yeah.
And we have a lot of bridges and a lot, and we do a lot of. Infrastructure and I'm proud of the county, what they've done and we are spending a lot of money and.
Yeah.
We want to maintain our roads and, and, and spend them and it's common sense is what it boils down to, what needs to be fixed first with the money we have. And we're not in debt on it either, so.
These investments, you know, if you put concrete versus a steel, galvanized steel, that, that structure you're looking at there will be there a century from now.
Yep.
Still serving that area of the county, a metal one, I guarantee you would be in there several times over the next few years fixing it and replacing it. I'll finish up these slides here real, real quick, this is the second box of the twenty fifteen bridge package and this is on Simpson Road, three tenths mile north of Schilling Road and.
Schilling or Magnolia?
This is, it's north of Schilling, it's between Schilling and Magn, yeah. So that's basically same, same process. Pouring the, pouring the concrete, placement of the base slab and then the aprons, the box. There's the top slab and the walls. And this, this structure. Is currently completed out there and they've stripped the formwork, but again. I, I just, we went out there this morning and, and looked and it's, it is really sloppy out there, so it's gonna be a little while before we can backfill that.
That pretty good rain last night.
Yeah, we kind of push the envelope frequently and, and I know that annoys. Our maintenance folks, because sometimes they, they put a lot of wet dirt back in there, but sometimes there, there's a lot of pressure to get them back open. And we, just finishing up here is the inspection of culvert pipe, so we, we still are looking at those out all, all over the county and trying to complete that inventory. Here's a culvert pipe, for instance, that looks, doesn't look too awful bad, it's a concrete one, but if you look in, that's what's inside it, if you stick the camera inside there, somebody had shoved a metal pipe in there to make it longer. And it's just, it's not functioning, so every one of these you have to look through them and see what's going on, there's one that's been hit by our, hit by mower blades. So that's kind of into the slides, in the engineering report there, I'm just real quickly pointing out, we've probably got about a, close to a million dollars of structures already under contract, additional ones that haven't been started yet and then. On page, I also list there all the pack, bid packages that we currently have put out on the street and there's about ten of them and it's for the materials for the coming year. And for the crack sealing of the asphalt roads, aggregate and that sort of thing. And then we've also got the, we're working on the Waterwell Road Bridge. To replace another multi-barrel golden, and galvanized steel structure and the plans are near complete. And I've talked to both landowners, so one of them's already signed the easement and returned it to us and the other one is, we're, we're pretty close, I think, with them. And then we've got nine box culverts that we're gonna bid for this year, similar to the ones you've seen there.
Very good, any questions? Is there any public comment?
Yeah, Norman Adams, is Sling County exempt from receding and mulching for erosion control on your bridges and roadside and stuff? The State Highway Department, they mulch.
No, we, we mulch, actually.
Well, I didn't see any.
No, we put up silt control and, and those ones were just completed and they haven't done the seeding yet, but actually the Wyman Bridge, which was mentioned earlier, they just seeded and mulched that on Friday and I went out and, and then took a look at that, so we, we. We seed and mulch all our sites, yeah. To reestablish the grass growth.
Well, I was questioning it because I didn't see any of that being done and I didn't know if the county was exempt versus the state.
No, 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 they're all, it, it takes them a little while, they get done, that one on Wyman, I was out there and, yeah, they just got done drilling that in, it hasn't greened up yet.
It's got mulch on that.
Well, gentlemen, thank you very much for coming, always enjoyed that, so.
Thank you.
Is there any other business that's, that needs to come before the Commission today? Are there any announcements?
I'll read a quote from Benjamin Franklin. "I've lived a long time, sir, and the longer I live, the more convincing proofs I see this truth, that God governs in the affairs of men. If a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without his notice, is it probable that an empire can rise without his aid? We've been assured that in the sacred writings, that unless the Lord builds the house, they labor in vain who build it. I firmly believe this and also believe that without his concurring aid, we shall succeed in this political building no better than the builders of Babel."
Thank you, and the only other announcement is that we will reconvene for meeting number three at one-thirty upstairs to discuss the road and bridge shop building, is there anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned till one-thirty.